See, are we recording Liz? Aha, now we are. So, welcome everyone to the January 25th Plimpton Board of Selectmen meeting pursuant to Governor Baker's March 2020 orders suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and imposing some strict restrictions on the number of people to gather. This meeting is being done virtually. The information on how to join with video and/or audio is on the town website. This meeting is being recorded and just to remind everyone that the recording is not a, to be considered a public document. So, Mr. Trainer fellow Selectman has joined us and we're just waiting for-
Hello Amy.
Hi John, how are you?
Doing great, how are you doing?
Good, nice to see you again.
Hi Jim. Nice to see you.
How have you been? Have you both been, been well over there?
I've been living in a cave here. I don't think I've been, I haven't been in a grocery store since March.
Really?
Really.
You know, if you go at 6:00 AM often you're the only person there. It's like wonderful and they can't wait to serve you.
You know, we, we've been using, we started out just having curbside with a bunch of stores, but we've been using Walmart where you just do it all online and you drive up, open up the trunk and they put it in, they close it and off you go. It's really worked out well.
Don't even have to take off your slippers.
Nope.
Now Mark, is, is Just Right Farm open? Are you doing, are you open at all over there?
We closed last year. We're kind of waiting to see what's going to happen this year. I, we will certainly do weddings this year. Whether we'll do regular dinners is kind of still up in the air. I'm a little more skeptical about how quickly we're going to get back to normal than some are and so we'll wait and see. I think my wife is enjoying a break.
Yeah, sure.
Running restaurant for eight years is almost as difficult as being Selectman.
Well, it is a lovely place that you have and lovely grounds and very, very pleasant.
Thank you. So, we'll give Christine another minute in case she's having technical difficulties.
Yeah, if you, if you want, I can start doing a little talking with a little bit of background.
Sure, please.
Christine and Amy and I have met, you know, informally in the past and, but anyway, I'm, I'm the executive director of Habitat Greater Plymouth and we cover, I call it the Route 44 Habitat. Anywhere from Plymouth-Kingston over to Middleborough-Lakeville and all the towns touch Route 44. We're headquartered in Carver and we're next door neighbors of you in Plimpton and we've, we've done a lot of smaller projects, helping people with wheelchair ramps and fix-ups on their houses over the years. And I'll save the part about what we really need, which is land to be able to build more houses, affordable homes for, for working families. Oh, there's Christine.
Thank you. Sorry I'm late. I was having some technical difficulties.
We, we- We know about those.
Jim has merrily introduced himself. You've missed nothing, thank goodness.
I know Jim.
Right. So, anyway, thank you for your time and, and consideration in having us on this evening. We, I was just saying that we're, we are Habitat for Humanity and we are a local, locally based volunteer organization. You happen to have two people who do get paid by the organization, which is really unusual. There are altogether five of us who get paid. It's about four full-time positions if you add it all up, but we have 200 to 300 volunteers who show up to help with all phases of things that we do, from building houses, which is the most well-known thing, to fixing up houses. And we also have our Rest Store over on Route 58 in Carver where we sell, it's, it's like a thrift shop for furniture and the proceeds go to helping us fund what we do and also keep a lot of material out of, of landfills. I can talk a lot in a long time about Habitat, but I don't want to do that. I'm sure you'd all like me to stick to some timeframe and I was thinking if we had about altogether maybe 10 minutes to talk about what we're looking for. Good, I see you shaking your heads. Yes, that's good. Our biggest thing, we've just finished building houses in Plymouth, three of them. And last year about this time we finished building a house in Kingston. Our houses are affordable, which is a challenge for everybody in the real estate market these days. As real estate prices go higher and higher, it's really hard for young families in particular to become first-time home buyers. A lot of people who live in, in a town like Plimpton, you know, they, they're not able to stay because they just can't afford to stay there. A typical house might, might go for, you know, $350,000 to $450,000, whereas by going through the affordability process, we can sell them, our houses for $170,000. And we're able to do that by, mostly by having volunteers and a lot of community-minded people who help us with the trades like plumbing and electric, but also with materials. So, you know, we're, we're always anxious and it's, it's really a challenge for us to keep a flow of houses coming along. And I should say these, a lot of people sometimes think that, that Habitat is, is a giveaway program. It is not. We say that we, we give a hand up and not a hand out. In that, people do end up with a mortgage on their house. We provided at zero interest for 30 years, which means that a young family trying to start out can get a house that costs them less than $1,000 a month all in for their, their mortgage, their taxes, and their home insurance. So, you know, when you think that, that rentals in the area now are pushing $2,000 a month for something about the size of one of our three-bedroom homes, it's really a good situation for a family to get into. We've built over the years, I, I, back to the little bit of history, we were actually started by two ministers and a family from, from Plimpton. Wayne and Karen Barnes were founders, cranberry growers, still watching what we do all the time and helping us and cheering us along. Although, you know, they've moved out of the area, they're out in Santa Fe. And John was talking about not getting to the grocery store. They, they haven't been able to come back for, since last winter. So, because of the COVID situation. But, you know, they're good friends still and, you know, kind of spiritual leaders for us. They donated the first land for the first house that our affiliate was able to build. But, anyway, our current situation always is that we're really looking for, for land. And we can't afford to pay market rates for land. So, we, we join in collaboration and partnership with towns. Town of Plymouth, Town of Carver, Town of Middleborough, have all, Town of Kingston have all been partners with us on, on helping us to build a house or multiple houses in their towns. So, and often they're, they're able to do it by looking at their assessor's list and seeing if there's, there's any property that, that, I won't say surplus, but might be underutilized that the town could make available. One of the, the, we, we like to do it in partnership with the town because it, it, number one, it helps everybody have more affordable housing, which is really an important, much-needed thing. But also that we, you know, we like working with the towns. We find too that sometimes people think, well, somebody will give you land. Out of the 12 houses we've built, we've only had one donation of land that came through. The rest have been in some kind of partnership with, with the town. So, anyway, that's, that's where we are. I said 10 minutes. I won't go too much longer on my talks so that we have time to converse back and forth.
What does partnership with the town mean Jim?
Well, you know, like there are different levels of applying, all of our houses go through DHCD at the state to get certified and to make sure that there's a deed writer on it and that there's a, a regulatory agreement is what it's called, to keep that house in, as an affordable home in perpetuity. And as part of that process, it's really helpful. If, if there's a piece of land that, that virtually no waivers are required for, that makes it really easy. It, and it's kind of a joint application with the town and Habitat to the state. If there are some waivers, it's called a local initiative and project. And, you know, if the town is willing through our, through a regular hearing process to grant waivers that might allow us to build where a market rate builder would not be able to build, the state can provide some, some leniency and allow us to, to fit a house on a piece of land that otherwise might, may not be developable.
Do you, do you ever do duplexes or townhouses or multiple connected houses?
We haven't done that, but we're wide open to doing it. South Shore Habitat, just in the town of Duxbury, they built three duplexes. So, there's six housing units. Very nice, on a, on a very small kind of a circle. I won't even call it a cul-de-sac, just a circle off of one of the roads in West Duxbury. So, we'd, we'd be happy to do that.
Do you have a age requirement? You, you've noticed you keep referring to young buyers. Is that a-
That's not a, it's not hard and fast, but because we try to serve families and we're building three-bedroom homes, we typically will get, you know, a young family, either two parents or one parent raising two or three children. And part of the state's requirements are that all the bedrooms get filled. That, in other words, if you have just a, let's say a senior couple, they would not be as high on the list of qualification as a young family.
Can I bring my kids with me?
Pipe in there for, for a second, just because in one of our original conversations or past conversations with Christine, we also talked about the affordability issue for older members of our community, retirees who are being out, you know, outpriced. They can no longer afford to stay in their home and they're being forced to look elsewhere and move further away from family or what have you. And even to downsize, there's nothing to, to downsize to that's within the range of affordability. So, I know that Jim, if you remember Christine, that was, I remember sitting around the kitchen table at, at the town hall with you and talking about that very issue. And so, you know, where, that is something that we're open to as well, you know, and that could, maybe, maybe that could be the reason why we move into a duplex type of situation. So, it's such that it's not a three-bedroom, you know, it's a smaller unit with multiple units on that same piece of land. You know, that, that type of thing is something that we had talked about and we're, we're open to.
So, that, so that implies that if it was a duplex or multi, that maybe seniors could be part of that program?
Yes.
Yes. Yep. We just have to, you know, change the way we communicate about it in the application process and make sure people understand that, that it's just something different. And other habitats around the country have done similar things as well. It just hasn't been, our history has been the families, but it's not, it's not a-
It's not a hard and fast rule.
Do you have a set design or do you go by the land makeup?
We have, we've been building a, a three-bedroom Cape typically and we just built a ranch style, but really whatever would fit appropriately in a neighborhood or a subdivision or an area. You know, we, we try to pay a lot of attention to, to making sure our houses don't stand out as something different.
Right.
And the ranch style was built specifically because it was in anticipation of, of an older parent that would be moving in with ADA needs.
So, once the house is built, people buy, are there continued restrictions or continued control on your part or is it wholly owned and run by the new people?
They become the owners, but there's a deed restriction that is quite detailed. And it, it says that if they want to resell, they can't resell at market rate. They have to resell at a price that's already determined when they buy it. That's, you know, really just basically gives them their money back and a little bit towards inflation. And otherwise, then it comes back into the system and there again, it's in conjunction with the town. We're what's called the, you know, we're managers of the process, monitoring agent is what the term is. And we would then do a new selection process to locate somebody else.
So, you're, you're actually part of the approval control?
Yes.
And does the town have any, does the town also have a piece of that or not?
Um, but technically the state, the state likes to have a lottery and, and it's all income qualified. And by income qualified, we, we aim for 60% to, well, 30% to 60% of area median income, whereas the state says affordable can be up to 80% of area median income. What that means is in our area, a family of four is, is around $64,000 a year of income. So, if some, you know, somebody's a lot higher than that, they're, they're not income qualified. But after that, the state likes a lottery, but Habitat likes to look at the current living situation of a family and factor that in. And the state has allowed all the Habitat affiliates around the state to do that. It's a blind process where our, our family selection committee, the volunteers, go and visit each of the income-qualified families. And they look at overcrowding, substandard health and safety conditions, whether the people are paying way too much money out of their monthly income to, to be in that house. And, and that gives, then they get rated. And from that rating, usually about three families are, are presented to our board of directors. And we, we select based on that, but we don't know the names or we can't really identify the people based on the description. But what, back, quickly back to the town, there is a category called a local preference. And, you know, sometimes when towns have a piece of land, part of what they ask is that there's a local preference. And what that means is that people who live or work in the town become the, they have a higher status in the selection process.
But it's not exclusionary to residents of the town. It's just a higher way of looking at them.
Right.
Well, this is pretty exciting. We-
It is exciting.
Longtime need particularly for seniors who are getting priced out of the town. This multi-housing on one site through something like you sounds like an interesting possibility. I'm actually, I'm really excited. I-
Great.
Didn't fully recognize the potential here. And we have a real problem and I think we're hearing a potential solution.
The town does own quite a few pieces of land. We've never really sat down and thought about how to situate something on it. We now have a committee that's looking at it and I think with Christine's help, you know, the affordable housing, we can, this is, I'm excited too. I think it's something we should be doing. And I think we just got to make sure it fits into the culture of the town, but that I think is a given.
Yeah, the big takeaway was, we just need some land. We need to identify some land. And then Jim and Amy and Habitat want to work with us and they'll, they'll try new things that, you know, what we're interested in. So, they are willing to do, you know, whatever it takes to get some houses built in Plimpton that are appropriate for us. So, yeah, I think the big thing is we need to identify some parcels and, and, and hopefully get moving with the process.
Maybe we could have a walking meeting.
That'd be fun.
Oh, that would be great.
Yeah, maybe after we did, came up with a shortlist of some potential properties about, yeah, what we could do. Yeah, that's a great idea. Jim, before you leave, can you talk about your white glove program? I think, is that the right name?
The white glove, I'm not sure.
The seniors, the program for the seniors to help with projects in their home for-
Oh, no. We call it Brush with Kindness.
Brush with Kindness, thank you. I wasn't even close.
Yeah. Yeah, a lot of people, everybody knows, you know, about building houses, but we have, we have over the years had a very active program where we'll take on five or six projects a year of trying to help people stay age-in-place in their homes or not, doesn't matter what age they are, if they need home repairs. Typically, they are people with some disability or aging. And they, they again, fit into the category income-wise. They, but we do wheelchair ramps for them. We do, we do a lot of roof projects, windows and doors, weatherization, you know, stairways and floors that are deteriorated. We, we help with that, insulation, that, that kind of thing. That one is, is typically during the week. We had a really wonderful gentleman who, who organized all those projects for a number of years. He's, right now is, is like a lot of us laying low. You know, we don't, but anyway, that's our Brush with Kindness project, program.
One thing with those projects Christine is that we do typically ask those homeowners to participate in the, the expense of materials to the degree that they can to, you know, with the homes where out there soliciting donations and deep discounts on materials and so forth. But with the Brush with Kindness, it's free and free labor outright. But we typically ask those folks to pitch in on the materials that are necessary.
That's great.
I don't know if I mentioned, you know, what, what our process, you asked about selecting people for, for a house. Once somebody's selected, these, these houses that we've just built are being sold for $170,000. It typically costs us more than that, but we've arranged some good things. We've had some good donations over the last set of houses. So, that we actually have some money right now to try to put into the next project for us. And, you know, if that can be helpful in putting a program together with, with Plimpton, we're ready, willing and able to do that at this moment. And I'll say another thing about the seniors. I'm, I'm going to reach out to all the other affiliates in the state and ask if anybody has had experience where, you know, they've built projects that are specifically focused on seniors. We had one a couple of years ago that we were looking at in Kingston. Oh, sorry, Plymouth, right on the Kingston line, where it was a 55-plus development. And somebody had some, some lots in there and they were going to give us one out of four lots that they had. And we were, we were going to go in and, and work with the developer to, to build a home in there. So, you know, we had, we had done a lot of background looking at it and it was all, you know, there were all kinds of things we could do along those lines. So, I think we can certainly look at flexibility.
And just one last thing, Mark, you were saying how it sounded exciting. And I think one of the most exciting things about Habitat is when, when we do start to, you know, put those shovels on the ground and start swinging hammers, it becomes such a community-oriented thing. That's, I mean, we always talk about building homes, communities and hope at Habitat. And, and it's our volunteer community that is as equally important to us, you know, because, you know, they're putting in so much time and energy and we have our core crew and for sure that we, I can't imagine they wouldn't be back again and so forth. But it's such an, it's such a great chance to bring new members into that group and it really, especially for a small town like Plimpton, it really could become a, like a focal point, you know? And the homeowners are out there, they actually have to put in sweat equity hours. It's part of the deal. In addition to paying their affordable mortgage, they have to put in sweat equity hours on building their home. Or if they can't, then they can help the office in other ways if they're not physically able. But, but it's nice. It's a, it's just a really cool thing to see happen and come together.
I, I think it's the sweetest part of this whole setup. And I certainly understand that much of this done is volunteer labor, volunteer materials. We are kind of a town of very modest means, but we're a town where people are willing to consider donations. And I, yeah, this could be a real focal point for a community effort that we all could be proud of. And I think that may be the most exciting piece of the whole thing. So, this has been a fruitful meeting and I, we really appreciate your time. Any last questions?
Mine is, I have just more of a statement that I'd like to have Colleen Thompson reach out to either Jim or Amy to talk about their, their Brush with Kindness program because it might be something that we want to promote with our seniors.
Very much so. I think, I think that's a great idea.
Okay.
Absolutely. All right. Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming.
I'm sure it won't be the last.
No, just the first.
We'll see you soon.
All right. Good night. Happy New Year.
Thank you very much.
Now, that's a good call. That's a, that's a good meeting. Maybe an anecdote for some of the other things we've had to deal with today. All right, onward. So, next on the agenda is ratification of the appointment. So, that's the appointment of David Alberti as an alternate zoning board of appeals. We voted that last time. I'm, make a motion that we ratify that appointment tonight.
I'll second the motion.
And we'll do any discussion. Right roll call, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. And we're appreciative to have David back involved again with zoning board of appeals.
Certainly.
All right. Next item is the leave memo concerning town employees and coronavirus. We very much thank Liz for putting this together. You want to introduce this Liz?
Sure. Under some of the federal coronavirus legislation that had been passed early on during the COVID-19 pandemic, it provided for certain types of paid leads for employees as far as if somebody were waiting for test results or asked to quarantine. To date, Congress has not extended that particular provision, which is kind of leaving all the towns to come up with some of their own provisions. So, I think that the memo that went out to you, most recently revised as of today based on some feedback, we've been talking about it amongst kind of ourselves and the management network. I think that it's ready for primetime and ready to go as long as we go into it with the understanding that, you know, anything that the state may choose to pass or the federal government may choose to pass in the future, obviously that would prevail over our local provisions. But I think this will make things more clear-cut. I'm hoping we don't have to use it a lot. That, you know, we're on a path to wellness overall, but just given what some of our numbers are doing recently, I think it's a good idea to have something in place that people aren't left wondering where they stand should they be impacted by the virus.
I thought it looked great Liz.
Yeah, I like the setup. I assume it's been through the lawyers, right?
Yeah, from multiple communities.
Okay.
So, I'll make a motion that we approve the leave document that Liz has supplied us with.
I'll second the motion.
Any more discussion?
Nope.
Okay, roll call, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. Well done Liz. And open warrant articles is next. So, it seems to be that time of year and this would signal that it gets busy as if it hasn't been busy already. So, I'm going to make a motion that we open the annual and the special town meeting warrant.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? Okay, roll call, Mr. Trainer?
Yes.
Mrs. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. All right. Next bullet is social media policy. And once again, we can thank Liz for digging into this, a fairly complex issue and we have a- have a.
On this one, John picked up, Mark, I received your comments. John picked up on a spot, I believe that the policy, so this one was largely drafted by Kingston. And I believe it actually came from their police department because there were a lot of references to the department as opposed to the town. John had actually picked up late last week on a spot where I hadn't made that change. So that's been fixed, but I have not heard back from town council on this. This one's a little unlike, say the one that you voted on previously about the paid leave, that one was, went through multiple communities. It's invented multiple times by various towns. This one where it hasn't, I would suggest potentially a vote to adopt and the town council's review and us making any suggested edits that they might have. Obviously, if they have really significant edits, I could bring it back forward to the board and let you know what those are. And we could rescind it or adopt a modified one. But I think that this would go a long way, just to get something on paper for us. But again, it wouldn't go into effect or be sent out to anybody until council gets back to us with the review.
So that will be the motion that we approve this document pending town council's input.
I'll second the motion.
Any further discussion? Roll call, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Russo, yes. All right, well done. Thank you, Liz. Nice work.
Welcome.
We just have to be careful to keep up with you so we don't get buried in paper or fall behind.
I think at some point we should revisit having kind of a policy manual. I know Tara Shaw, when she was with the town, had begun working on putting some of that together. I think that would maybe, just for ease of knowing what we have on file for policies or updating things, maybe that's a project for after we get through town meeting. That seems like a good summertime project to me.
That would be a great project. We started that three or four years ago, that we do have a fair amount of policy, but it's spread out all over the place and just bringing it.
I'd like to see, one of the ways maybe to start it is to put together an index.
Yeah.
And we can get from other towns, we can just make sure that we haven't missed anything, get the index up. I would rather not see it in paper form, though. I'd like to see it up on the website.
Yeah, that would be great.
Yeah. People can access it as they need it.
Absolutely. And just one place to go as the first place.
Exactly.
For it all, absolutely.
So would this be like an employee handbook?
In a sense, online, yes.
In a sense, yeah. But have it available online. A lot of towns do that. They have it up on their, like a portion of the website related resources or wage and personnel, just so anybody can see what, what the deal is with that.
The other thing is we can put parts of it so it's only visible internally to the staff.
Right.
Not necessarily to all residents, depending on what the policy is.
Right.
That sounds great.
Okay. We are up to the town administrators update. I think we have had some of that, there may be more, but this including, includes COVID-19 update as well.
Right, so we sent out an update today, just kind of letting people know what the status is with various town departments with our numbers going up so rapidly in terms of COVID. Our plan for right now for the townhouse is to just keep things status quo. Same thing for the transfer station sticker sales. So far, so good. We haven't received any complaints or any, and nothing has been brought to our attention as far as any not being able to get service or not being able to get an appointment if they need one. So our plan is to keep that status quo at least for the next couple of weeks and then reevaluate. Hopefully the numbers come down a little bit and that spike that we saw at the end of last week was largely due to the holidays and kind of contacts of contacts. So that's our plan for now on that. As far as vaccines go, we're receiving a lot of questions. I know the fire department and the board of health are being flooded with questions from people. The state released some updated guidance today in their plans for phase two of vaccinations. We intend to keep people informed as far as the minute we find anything out, we're happy and ready, willing and able to get that information out to the public. Currently speaking, we're not in a position to, you know, administering vaccines or anything like that, but we're working on a program right now with some other towns, kind of on a board of health level and also with our fire department now running the community paramedicine program. So as soon as we can get people vaccinated, whether we have that capability or whether we partner with another town in the area, we'll definitely keep the public informed on that. Chief Silva had put together a nice update about a week ago pertaining to the vaccines. That went up on social media and everything and it seemed to be pretty well received. So again, nothing new to report on vaccinations, but that said, we will keep people informed. Dating the COVID-19 numbers weekly, both on the website and on Facebook, our social media account. We did receive a request from somebody asking if there was a way to get more specific as far as age groups in which we're seeing cases. Honestly, we don't readily have access to that data. They pointed out, I believe, Plimpton's doing that and posting it daily with what age groups. We are in a situation where, you know, we have a limited capacity as far as the number of staff on hand and also more specifically, number of staff who actually have access to that information. The state database that, that they get the case numbers from, and I don't have access to that, but it's my understanding that you would essentially have to go into individual patient files and almost extrapolate that data to report it. We just don't have the manpower for that. However, if the state does begin reporting that data to us, they're more than happy to get it, get it up, get it out there. I know that the state is tracking that to a certain extent because if you go to their kind of comprehensive COVID data board, they do have data by age and population, but it's statewide. It's not broken down by city and town. You know, whatever information we have, we are ready, willing and able to put that out to the public. So anything we know, the people can know. But if we don't have anything to report, you know, we're not in a position manpower wise to kind of come up with different data sets or to reformat that data. And otherwise, everything is status quo. We're working on the Highway Barn Roof Project. That's all signed up. They did their preliminary site visit and they're ordering the materials. We're going to be looking at wrapping up our Bean Communities grant and seeing if we can get some of those outstanding projects for Denneb Elementary, at least begin the procurement for those. So everything else is moving ahead.
Very good. Thank you. I think we are up to minutes, the minutes for January 11th. Everyone have a chance to take a peek at these?
Yeah, I didn't see anything.
I, I was fine as well. It's great minutes. So I'll make a motion they be accepted as presented.
I'll second.
A roll call, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Russo. So we are up to, well, we're almost up to rant and raves, but just to mention in two weeks, the group that we'll be meeting with is Area 58, or at least the executive director. The tri-town studio agreement is up for renewal. And so he'll do a quick presentation on that and then just update us in a general way and our opportunity to meet with Rich and ask some questions. So that'll be in two weeks, February 8th. Anything else before we go to rant and raves? Okay, we're up to rant and raves. Anyone like, like to go first?
I'll go first. My rave is Habitat for Humanity and the possibility of a community project. And this kind of, you know, reminds me of, you know, the Churchill project and some of the other great projects where the troops have rallied and we have gone so far beyond what we thought we were capable of. So that, it's exciting, very, to, you know, be starting to look at something like this. So that's my rave.
Yeah, I support that. I think we have an opportunity too, to maybe drag in some tradespeople that haven't been as involved in the town lately as maybe we'd like them to be.
And I, I'll chime in as well on that. I, I, this is like a gift offer to us. We have spoken for so long about senior housing and maybe grouped cluster housing. And I totally agree. I think it has that flavor of Churchill, Cato's or multi-funding sources. I'm, I'm really, really excited. That was a really fruitful part of the meeting. I do have one little rant, not to end on that note, but we had a little mischief at Churchill Park last week, some graffiti, some trash left behind. Kind of frustrating that that has happened, but within an hour of the open space committee and the board of selectmen, learning of that, we ensured that there was a police investigation. We got in process cleaning it up and we have started closing the gate at dusk to deal with those issues. I will just say, sort of editorializing, that was a project that was totally a community effort. It took years of time and effort and toil and even the loss of some friendships along the way to get that done. And that's kind of sacred ground over there. So people, I know how it's not too hard to get rowdy and sometimes for alcohol to bring some behavior that we would prefer not, that is not the place for that to happen. So, so not to end totally on a, on a rant, I think my rave, my rave is twice over for Christine, both for what she just introduced about Habitat for Humanity and also I've heard from so many people that have happened upon her rave two weeks ago. So thank you, Christine, for inspiring people. That was quite beautiful.
That's awfully nice of you. You guys inspire me. We have a very good team.
So I have, I don't know if this is a rave, but I must say I'm feeling much more optimistic. It feels like we have a lot of things going on and maybe there's an appreciation with people now that we've got to pull together. This Habitat is a great focus project because it could cut across so many layers of the town. I think Christine, it's going to be great. I'm looking forward to doing whatever I can to help you.
We'll get there.
Beautiful.
Absolutely.
All right, we'll do this again in two weeks, if not sooner, hopefully not. Thank you, everyone. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call, Mr. Trainer.
Yes.
Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Russo, it's like a haiku. Mr. Trainer, Mrs. Joy, Mr. Russo.
We didn't have our lady friend from the paper on, but I'm sure she's going to be looking at this.
She'll watch it, I'm sure.
Good night, everyone.
Good night. Thanks, Liz.
Good night.
Good night.